Hey, good evening, everybody. I'm gonna go ahead and call the Bridgewater Town Council meeting to order. It is Tuesday, November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one at seven P. M. I'd ask that we all first stand, rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag, United States of America. And to the republic. Justice. A nation. Nation. God. Invisible. Liberty. Justice. For. Justice.
We do have one condolence this evening on behalf of the town council. Our condolences to the family of Paul Sagrivi, who passed away on October eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Mrs. Sagrivi served the United States Air Force during the Vietnam War. I'd also like to take a moment of silence at this time for all those veterans and first responders who have passed. Okay, pursuant to section twenty, chapter twenty of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-one, an act relative to extending certain COVID nineteen measures adopted during the state of emergency. This meeting of the town council for the town of Bridgewater will be fully remote and accessible to the public through remote participation to the greatest extent possible. There'll be no in-person attendance permitted. Citizens who wish to tune into the meeting may do so via Zoom or Facebook Live. Our first item is approval of the minutes from the previous meeting on November second, two thousand and twenty-one. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
On second. Okay, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll move for roll call vote.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Not present.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Moore? Mr. Wood?
Yes.
And I apologize if I messed this up. Mr. Columbotus?
Columbotus, I do not see him.
Okay.
And Councilor Wood will not be in attendance tonight.
So it's six?
No.
Zero zero.
More. You mean more? His wood is right here.
I'm sorry. Yeah, Councilor Moore.
Okay. And that's all set.
Excellent. Moving on. Item B, announcements from the president. I have none. Next item is C, proclamations. We have none. Next item is citizens' open forum. Do we have any citizens here wishing to speak during citizens' open forum? Deborah, I don't see anybody wishing to speak. Okay, moving on. Item E, appointments. We have none. Next item is F, hearings. We have none. Next item is G, license transactions. We have none. Next item is H, presentations. We have none. Moving on to I, town managers' reports. First item is the Mitchell School update.
As President, the Mitchell work continues as planned and on schedule, so not a whole lot to report there. Binder paving has been, some of that has been done over the past week and a half, and there'll be more of that in first week of December as well. Curbing is going in on Wally Kruger Way next week. Drainage is being completed next week as well on the South Street side, once a telephone pole is removed. So drainage for the project will be complete at that point. All the trades are in the building and Sheetrock is beginning to go up in some selected areas. Roofing is being completed. We are taking care, that is, the town is taking care of a large tree that needs to be removed on the north east side of the property. So we will take care of that. It came down partially in one of the first storms this fall and then was a little bit worse at a second storm, so we'll take care of that. Timeline is still good. Project completion date of July two thousand and twenty-two. Next meeting of the school building committee is Monday, December thirteenth at six thirty, and everybody is welcome to attend. Those are Zoom meetings. Anybody wanting more information, it's BridgewaterSchoolProject.com, and that is what I have.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions from the council? Okay, seeing none. Michael, I don't have a question, but just sitting on the school building committee, I know we have tried to organize a group effort to check out the building, do a walkthrough. I was just wondering if it's possible for you to try to coordinate an opportunity for the council to join that, so the whole council could get a walkthrough of weather out with the building.
I would be happy to do that. Glad to do that.
Awesome. Thank you. Our next item is COVID nineteen update.
COVID nineteen update. We now have twenty-nine reported cases. We've got nineteen adults and ten children. We have fifteen, fifteen of those cases are among vaccinated folks, and fourteen are non-vaccinated. We have a vaccination rate of eighty, I'm sorry, fifty-eight percent fully vaccinated and sixty-four percent have at least one shot and don't have a lot more to report on COVID other than that, but happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the council?
If I could, Mike, during, during the initial phase of the vaccine, there was, you know, every, everyone was the fire department, the university, and then the town was doing everything to get the vaccine. Is there any effort of a similar type of thing, either maybe even on a smaller scale for booster shots, or is, is, is any, everyone just kind of like, find out where to go on your own? Is, have you been asked that question?
I have not been asked that question, but that is a good question. I know the university is, is shut down their vaccination clinic, and we have not stood up a one on our own, but I can certainly find out where the nearest opportunities are for, for vaccination. I can certainly do that.
For boosters, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Okay, see, and then moving on to item C, mobile station environmental status.
Yes, the, let me just give you a little bit of background about environmental liabilities. There are two, generally two separate laws that govern environmental liability. One's federal, one's state, the federal CIRCLA, commonly known as CIRCLA, Comprehensive Environmental Response Compensation and Liability Act. And then also on the state level is the Massachusetts Oil and Hazardous Material Release Prevention and Response, and Response Act, which is more commonly known as twenty-one E. Under each of those laws, there's sort of a due diligence process in, and we conduct that in order prior to any taking or any purchase of property. We follow those steps meticulously precisely so that the property can remain eligible for certain liability protections that, that are afforded to us under both CIRCLA and twenty-one E. We have begun our first Phase One environmental assessment, and Phase One is to identify essentially the records of what has been filed on that property. Any information, it's not a, it's not a specific testing of soils and so forth, but it's a production of all the records that are associated with that project or with that property rather. So we have begun gathering all that information, and I can tell you that fortunately, there is no indication yet of any sort of adverse hazardous materials on that property. We continue to go through step by step that due diligence process, which is a, a essentially a checklist that we want to make sure we follow, as I say, in order to remain essentially eligible or to secure the status that a municipality has when it does an eminent domain taking as, as not a responsible party under CIRCLA or twenty-one E. So, so we continue to go through that. We've generated voluminous documents, including all documents related to yearly testing of the tanks when they were in the ground there, the, the fuel tanks. We have documents relating to the removal of those tanks. We have documents relating to minor spills that occurred on that property that were overseen by D E P, the cleanup overseen by D E P. So, so we're compiling all those, and, and we will, certainly they're all public documents, so any counselor that wants to see those is certainly welcome, but, but we continue that process. We will not, we will not quote unquote, pull the trigger on any kind of eminent domain taking until we are certain that the property is clean through those assessments. So, so I want to make sure the counselors understand that. But happy to, happy to answer questions on that.
Excellent. Thank you. Counsel Chase?
Thank you, Mr. President, and through you to the town manager. If, if I understand, firstly, thank you very much, Mr. Dutton, for your clarification on that issue. The impetus for that really arose from discussions on the committee level in, in discussion about the proposed taking. One item, I just needed to further clarify a bit. Do I understand that the, the tanks have actually previously been removed?
Correct. I believe, I don't have it in front of me. I believe it was twenty thirteen the tanks were actually removed.
Correct. Okay, so it's just a question of, of any possible residual oil or gasoline leakage and things related to that?
Exactly.
Sorry, I thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council? Okay, see, and none. Thank you. Moving on to next item J, discussions. Any items up for discussion? No. Okay, next, moving on. K, committee reports. We have any committee reports? Okay, seeing none. I'll just briefly mention, many of you have received documents where we're at with the conceptual design and rough construction costs for the new Bridgewater Fire Headquarters. I would like to do a presentation at our next council meeting as this would involve some additional renovations and repairs in the substation, so a comprehensive fire building upgrade. So we'll put something together and present that at the next town council meeting, but you have some of the early documents to look at cost and, you know, design. Okay, next item L, legislation for action. First item A is Resolution R F Y twenty-two dash zero zero two F Y twenty-three budget resolution. The Budget and Finance Committee and the Finance Committee met jointly in eleven fifteen, two thousand and twenty-one. They voted six to oh and three to oh respectively in favor. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Any discussions?
Just.
Council what?
In, in committee, and I hope the amendments are for you or, or we received them there. There are no amendments we need to vote on. They were just script errors about the dates that were in there. So they apply to this next fiscal year, not the current fiscal year, as some of the dates earlier said.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other comments? Council Gallagher.
Thank you, Mr. President. One of the big discussions we had last night with the joint meeting with the Finance Committee was the 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 amount that we earmarked to try to have an unreserved fund balance, so target a free cash amount, and we, we, we set that at one point five percent. I expressed some concern about that, but did ultimately agree that let's go with the one point five percent. One point five percent of a sixty-two million dollar budget is nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars approximately. And we were assured that that one point five percent should should not hinder the ability of the town manager or the finance team of putting together a solid budget for the town. That was always my concern of having that number there that we don't hear from the finance team or the town manager that, well, we can't do this because the budget resolution says this. I don't ever want to have to tie the, tie our town manager's hands. I want him to be able to put together a budget that he feels he can do within the revenues that are expected. And to, to, to set a one point five benchmark for reserves six or seven years ago was certainly necessary because we needed to build up our reserves, and we've done that. So I'm comfortable with the one point five percent as Councilor Wood and Councilor George are as well. And I hope that it doesn't hinder the finance team of putting together the budget as we move forward into the budget process. We know there are areas that capital expenditures will be made, will be needed to meet the budget. But if there were programs that the town manager wanted to, wants to implement or increase staffing in certain areas, you know, all the contracts, which we're gonna refer to committee tonight, and the school committee approved the teacher contract the other night, you know, those are gonna have costs and impacts to the budget. So I didn't want, I, I was concerned about having that number of one point five percent. So they didn't want to tie their hands when they put together the budget, but I'm comfortable in doing that, and that's just for the rest of the counselors to know. Our free cash has come in for the past six years over that one point five percent consistently, and we've been able to meet our budget. Yeah, there are some things I think we all want to be able to increase staffing in, in certain departments. I know that highway department's been a big target of what we'd like to increase, increase, and that's always been, you know, hard to do with revenue forecasting. So I just wanted to throw that in there.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council? Okay, see, and none. I'll move for roll call vote.
Sure. Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Moore? Mr. Wood?
Yes.
And Mr. Columbotus?
Yeah.
That's eight zero zero.
Thank you. Moving on. Item B, Order Zero F Y twenty-two dash zero twenty-one, acceptance of MRS grant. The Budget and Finance Committee met on eleven sixteen, two thousand and twenty-one. And the disposition, which is three to oh. Let's, let me see what this saying here. Okay, so Finance, Budget and Finance Committee met this evening, recommended three to oh, and the Finance Committee recommended six to oh on eleven ten twenty-one. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. Okay, any discussion? Okay, see, and none. Move for roll call vote.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yeah.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Moore? Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
And Mr. George?
Yes.
Nine zeros, eight zero zero.
Moving on. Item C, Order Zero F Y twenty-two dash zero two two, Acceptance of D M H Grant. The Budget and Finance Committee met on eleven sixteen, twenty-one, twenty-one, and voted three to oh. At their meeting held at eleven ten, two thousand and twenty-one, the FinCom voted six to oh, both to recommend. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? See, and none. Who for roll call vote?
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Chase? Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
And Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Eight zero zero.
Okay, moving on. Item D, Order Zero F Y twenty-two dash zero two three, Acceptance of a Grant for the C O A. The Budget and Finance Committee met on eleven sixteen, two thousand and twenty-one, and recommended three to oh. At their meeting held on eleven ten, two thousand and twenty-one, the FinCom voted six to oh to recommend. Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? See, and none. Move for roll call vote.
Deborah, you're on mute.
Sorry about that. Mr. Columbotus? Am I still on mute? No.
Nope.
Okay, Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
And Mr. George?
Yes.
Eight zero zero.
Okay, moving on to item M, old business. We have none. Item N, new business. First item A, Order Zero F Y twenty-two dash zero two four, Acceptance of Wild and Scenic Taunton River Stewardship Council Grant. I'll defer to the town manager.
As President, this is relatively small grant for the project, but this would begin to fund the the work being done on the High Street, removal of a High Street Dam and the replacement of the High Street Bridge project, which is now in the grant funding phase.
Okay, excellent. Any questions to the town manager? Okay, see, and none. Entertain a motion to refer to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committee?
So moved.
Have a second. Okay, move for a roll call vote.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
And Mr. Columbotus?
Yeah.
Eight zero zero.
Thank you. Item B, Order Zero F Y twenty-two dash zero two five, Tax Classification Residential Facta. Defer to the town manager.
As President, I think as most, most counselors know that have been through this process, this is an annual process which establishes the tax rate, ultimately establishes the tax rate in the town of Bridgewater. Traditionally, it's been a residential factor of one, which essentially means that commercial, industrial, residential are all assessed at the same tax rate. And so this requires referral, obviously, to Finance and Budget and Finance Committee, and then a, a tax, a tax classification hearing, which will be held, I believe, at your next meeting.
Okay, so we're not sending this to advertising now, referring to Budget, Finance and Finance?
Actually, you can send, and I'm sorry, you can send it to, you can refer it, but also send it to advertisement.
Okay, entertain a motion to send to advertising and refer to the Budget, Finance and Finance Committee.
So moved.
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
Yeah, any, any discussion? Council Gallagher.
Usually, I think at this time, we, we ask the council clerk to set up a hearing on this too, Mr. Dutton. Is that, was that come later?
Correct. You would, you would, nope, you would be setting up the hearing for, I believe, the December seventh meeting, which is essentially why we'd be advertising.
Okay. Public hearing.
Correct.
Yeah, the discussion. See, and none. Move for a roll call vote.
Mr. George?
Yeah.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
And Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Eight zero zero.
Thank you. Item C, Order Zero F Y twenty-two dash zero two six, B A A Collective Bargaining Contract Ratification. Defer to the town manager.
As President, we've negotiated several collective bargaining agreements over the past several weeks. Well, we've been in negotiations for the past number of months, but we've resolved several that you see here over the last several weeks. The, this one being the Bridgewater Administrative Association, which formerly was the S C I U. So I would encourage you to refer this to Budget and Budget and Finance and Finance Committee.
Okay, entertain a motion to refer to the Budget, Finance and Finance Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? See, and none. Move for a roll call vote.
Mr. Columbotus? Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
And Mr. George?
Yes.
Eight zero zero.
Okay, moving on. Item D, Order Zero F Y twenty-two dash zero two seven, B A A Collective Bargaining Contract Appropriation Transfer. Defer to the town manager.
As President, this is, usually I can tell you that we will ask ratification and then we'll follow up with an appropriation order, which just gives the finance department enough time to calculate the exact figures that need to be transferred. In this case, we have done that calculation prior to bringing the, the contract forward for ratification, so we're just including it here for ease, quite frankly.
Okay, excellent. Entertain a motion to refer to Budget, Finance and Finance Committee.
So moved.
Have second. Counsel Chase, any discussion? See, and none. Move for roll call vote.
Mr. Columbotus? Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
And Mr. George?
Yes.
Eight zero zero.
Thank you. Moving on. Item E, Order Zero F Y twenty-two dash zero two eight, U S W Collective Bargaining Contract Ratification. Defer to the town manager.
Not a whole lot more to say on this one. It's a three-year contract negotiated. We also followed this up with an appropriation, which is following this, but, but encourage you to forward this to Finance and Budget and Finance.
Thank you. Entertain a motion to refer to the Budget, Finance and Finance Committee.
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? See, and none. Move for roll call vote.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
I abstain.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
And Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
So that is seven zero one.
Thank you. Item F, Order Zero F Y twenty-two dash zero two nine, U S W Collective Bargaining Contract Appropriation Transfer. Defer to the town manager. Probably nothing much to say, huh?
Exactly.
Okay, entertain a motion to refer to the Budget, Finance and Finance Committee.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? See, and none. Move for a roll call vote.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
I abstain.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Wood?
Yes.
And Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
That's seven zero one.
Thank you. Moving on. Item G, Order Zero F Y twenty-two dash zero three zero, Capital Plan Order. I'll defer to the town manager.
As President, this Capital Plan Order, I believe, the council will remember, we did an order in the spring, late spring, and then promised that we'd be coming back for an additional order once we had a solid, some solid footing and solid knowledge about where COVID was going and the funding via COVID and so forth. This is that second phase, so this is the second phase of the F Y twenty-two capital funding. As you can see, it funds two million, seven hundred sixteen thousand dollars and funds a whole host of things throughout town, and we were able to fund a number of Bridgewater Rainham items that, that were on their capital plan as well. So, so I encourage you to forward that to Budget and Finance and Finance Committee as well.
Do we want to send this to advertising at the same time?
I'm sorry. Yes, you do.
Okay, entertain a motion to center advertising for a public hearing and refer to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committee.
So moved.
We have a second. Counsel Chase, any discussion? I just had one quick item, Michael. If it's possible, you have project numbers, and I believe the numbers refer to individual town departments. It might just be helpful if we could add one more column. When you look at buildings and property, specifically where we're replacing boilers and those types of things, if it's possible. It might help us to understand it better. Thank you.
Absolutely. No problem.
Okay, move for a roll call vote.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
And Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Eight zero zero.
Thank you. Moving on. Item H. Thank you. Moving on, item H, order zero F Y twenty-two dash zero three one rescind Curve Street loan order, defer to the town manager.
Uh, this president, the Curve Street project, as you recall, when we um actually appropriated these funds, uh, we knew we were in line to get grant funding, we also knew that. Uh, we had received a bid that was substantially below the um. Originally projected cost, so uh we can now uh rescind the loan order, um, and we require council vote to do that, so again, I would encourage you to. Uh, refer this to finance and budget and finance.
Okay. Mr. President, quick. Quick question, does this have to go back to the committee to rescind, or can it be put just on our next agenda to vote on to rescind the order?
Uh, that's a great question. Uh, I don't believe there's any reason you have to refer it if if there's uh, you know, if it's essentially a pro forma. Um, you could certainly keep it at the council level and deal with it the next meeting.
Yeah, I agree. We have, yeah, we have a lot of stuff coming for budget and finance, so I would. I I I would recommend bring bringing this on the next agenda for a vote for the town council.
Okay, sounds good. Is there any other discussion from the council? Okay, see a nun, moving on, item I. Order zero F Y twenty-two dash zero three two Bridgewater Police Association contract ratification. Defer to the town manager.
This president, another three-year contract uh settled, and uh this one does not have the appropriation uh just yet, but uh but does. Um, we are asking for the ratification, so unfortunately, uh, I would recommend this go to Budget and Finance and Finance Committee.
Excellent. Um, I stand a motion to refer to Budget Finance and Finance Committee.
So moved.
We got a second, Council Chase, uh, any discussion? Council, what I saw you un unmute yourself, you must have something to say.
I was gonna, I was gonna motion or second, but I I do have a. A request that by the time we have the meeting that the uh the numbers that are affected are uh available for the committee.
That's doable, certainly.
Any other comments from the council? See a nun, move for a roll call vote.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
And Mr. Columbodus?
Yes.
Eight zero zero.
Thank you. Moving on to citizens' comments, are there any citizens wishing to speak during citizens' comments? Deborah, I do not see any.
Nor do I.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to council comments, Council George.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to say, uh, thank you to. Uh, the Veterans Council for coordinating and putting on an excellent Veterans Day parade. Uh, Mother Nature held up for us, which was great, great attendance, and um. I know it was a uh a small group that did a ton of work on it, uh, so I very much appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Gallagher.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, I I want to um. Uh, welcome Deborah Ward, our new council clerk, who just went through her first meeting. And just to let her know, this is the shortest meeting the council counselor has had. So since he became president, so so uh don't get used to these short meetings, um. But um, welcome whatever, and welcome to Bridgewater, and I'm sure you'll do fine once we can meet you and see you, uh, all the better, right?
Yeah, thank you.
And I'm ha- I was happy to see, um, what came out. Uh, between our last meeting was the uh design and projected estimate cost of uh. The new uh proposed main fire station. Uh, here in Bridgewater. Uh, it's been long overdue. Uh, I think our 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 fire department uh. Uh, needs a new station, deserves a new station, and I'm looking forward to uh continuing my work on the council. And hopefully, you know, be definitely be supportive of the efforts as this project, this big capital project moves forward. Through the process. And finally, I just hope that everyone enjoys and has a happy Thanksgiving with their families. Um, hopefully, it's. A lot better than last year when we had to uh restrict our. Our invitees, uh, and hopefully we can all uh get together with as many family members as we as we can, and we'll see you all in December. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Perry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, echoing similar sentiments, uh, welcome to Deborah Ward. Uh, look forward to working with you and uh meeting you in person one of these days. Um, certainly want to uh echo the sentiments regarding uh Veterans Day and the Tri-Town Parade and all the people that worked hard to put it together. Uh, we had a beautiful day, one of the better uh weather days we've had for that in recent history, so uh it was a wonderful day. Um, certainly want to thank all the veterans out there for their. Their sacrifices and their service, and uh uh we can never ever uh forget them. Um, the other thing I also want to mention is uh in the vein of Thanksgiving coming up, uh, for those interested, uh, Bridgewater Rainham will be playing at home this year against Brockton on a Thanksgiving Day game. And they will be playing for their league title, so it's got a little extra uh uh meaning behind it. So, and I believe it's at ten o'clock, so for those who want to make the Thanksgiving Day game, please come out, and we wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Chase.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I uh I certainly would like to uh. Uh, echo the sentiments of several other councils with respect to Veterans Day festivities. I think that uh. Uh, the the parade was certainly a very enjoyable event, and we thank the Veterans Council for their participation and assistance in that regard. Um, I also attended um uh the event at the um earlier in the week at the Senior Center that was put together by our. Um, Emily Emily Williams, uh, director there and uh Roddy Walsh. And uh, that was a very enjoyable uh program. Uh, so thanks to all the Bridgewater citizens who have come out to attend. Uh, those events uh in honor of our veterans, and I hope that um you all enjoyed it as thoroughly as did I. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Souza.
No comments this evening, thank you.
Council Wood.
Thanks, uh, everybody covered uh most everything. I'll just say again, welcome, Deborah. Um, but uh, since we're not meeting again till after Thanksgiving, I will mention that if any high schoolers uh need volunteer hours. Um, we're gonna be setting up the decorations on the common this Saturday after Thanksgiving, just contact me or any lion uh about doing that. And um, we have in-house chiropractic uh services, so. So don't worry about that, but yeah, if you need hours, uh, just contact us and we'll be good to go. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilor Columbodus.
Nothing, no, thanks.
Okay, and I just had a few comments real briefly, just wanted to welcome, as with others, Deborah to the town council. I just want to take a minute to just to thank Josh for all of his hard work and and taking on what he's taken on while we've tried to find a replacement. I know he's already overwhelmed and uh he's really done a fantastic job helping me every other week with setting up meetings and the notes that go with the council agenda. I certainly appreciate the comments that Council Gallagher just mentioned a few minutes ago. Um, as members of the council, you've all gotten a preview of the proposed fire station. I think it's really important as we come out of COVID, this the timing for this project couldn't be any more perfect for the town. And supporting the firefighters, and and we're really building for something for the next fifty to a hundred years in this proposal, as well as fixing some of the deficiencies at Station Two. So I I hope that uh the whole council can get behind this proposal as you get more detail and uh we can see it through. And then lastly, although we won't be having a council meeting per se, uh, do plan on um getting an email, trying to put a workshop together probably next Monday. So we can have some discussions about some of the charter changes, as many of you know, the Charter Review Committee. Uh, worked for a long period of time to make some recommended changes, we need to make sure that uh we are timely with those so that those can get to where they need to be, so. Just uh as a heads up, probably next Monday, they appreciate it. With that, I would enter, uh, move on to the next item on the agenda, which is executive session, which we have none, actually after many, many weeks. And moving on to adjournment, so entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We have a second.
Second.
Okay, move for a roll call vote.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
And Mr. Columbodus?
Yes.
Eight zero zero.
Thank you, everyone.
Have a great night.
Have a great night.
Good night.
Thank you.